Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 12, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski. Welcome to everyone who braved the ice. I know the main roads are still good, but my subdivision is still full of ice. So I hope that everyone didn't have too much trouble getting here tonight. I would like my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, I'm John Lazzarowitz.
Leonardo Savage.
Patty McCoy, thank you for being here tonight.
Patrick Keough, thanks for coming out tonight.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for coming this evening. I'd like to begin by introducing Annette Jury, who is so kind to assist us this evening in keeping our minutes for us, as well as the man behind the scenes, Charlie Jones, who records our meetings for those that cannot be here. I'd like the remainder of the staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Hi, WPO's Chief Finance and Operations Officers. Welcome.
Welcome, everyone, Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening, Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Could everyone please stand for the Pledgeable Agents?
Pledgeable Agents. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda and Approval of the Agenda. I think we are going to need to modify or amend our agenda tonight. Do I have a motion on that?
Do I need an action item? Would it be 1902-59? 1902-59?
Yeah, let's make it 1902-59.
I would like to make a motion to amend our agenda and to remove B, Celebrating Success and School Improvement Plan Highlights under Teaching and Learning at Dodson Elementary.
Second.
Is it to remove them?
Yes.
Yes. Due to the weather, we didn't feel that we should ask students to come out tonight.
Got it, I understand.
We'll move them forward on the agenda on the 26th.
Yep, we will bring these items back at our next board meeting. Okay, so I have a motion by Member McCoy and a second by Member Brooks. All in favor, or any discussion? I think we kind of just did the discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Okay. Now, I would like to have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. If anyone would like to make a motion, I would appreciate it.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the adoption of the agenda and to approve of the Consent Agenda action item 1902-51.
I second that.
I have a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda and as amended and approval of the Consent Agenda action item 1902-51. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Savage. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the Consent Agenda?
Yes, this evening, the Consent Agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires for your consideration, as well as leaves and resignations, and tenure recommendations. We also have the approval of minutes from our regular meeting on January the 22nd, 2019, and our special meeting on January the 29th, 2019.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome a brand-new teacher to Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Her name is Michelle LeBlanc. So Michelle, could you come up, please? Even though Michelle is going to be a new teacher here in our district, she comes to us with over five years of experience from Wyandotte School Districts, Ann Arbor School Districts in Wayne Westland. She is going to be an elementary ASD teacher at Tonda Elementary School. Welcome, Michelle. She has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan University and a master's degree from Concordia College. So we're very fortunate that you're joining our team, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Michelle, you can come around.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the district.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Yes, welcome, congratulations.
I've got a call.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome aboard.
So happy for you, Michelle. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Great. So congratulations to Michelle LeBlanc and the community of Tonda Elementary School. Next, we have a tenure recommendation, and this is for Stacy Kokolath. Hi, Stacy, come on up. Bring your little one. We're all about kids. That's our business. So Stacy has been with us for five years. She is completing her tenure, her fifth year, which is her probationary teacher, and she is now going to receive tenure, and that means she has had five successful years as a teacher here in our district. Stacy is an elementary teacher, ASD teacher at Farron Elementary School. And Stacy, let me tell you some things that Julie Woodhams has said about you. So Julie is the Executive Director of Specialized Student Services, and here is what she has to say about Stacy. Stacy is one of our elementary center-based ASD teachers. Stacy is dedicated to her students and families. Stacy student taught in one of our district ASD classrooms. She then took a position as an ASD classroom paraprofessional and now has become a classroom teacher. Stacy is very involved in developing lessons for core vocabulary. She was a leader and promoter of this critical concept with the speech staff working in our center-based classrooms. She has participated in several RISA Curriculum Assessment Trainings, constantly developing her skills in this area. Stacy maintains a strong focus on the essential elements, using them to guide her instruction and classroom focus. Stacy uses technology to enrich her classroom instruction. Her classroom is organized and reflects an environment that supports student needs. She works collaboratively with her team members and is willing to go above and beyond to ensure success for her students. Stacy balances her work with students with their ever-increasing need for compliant paperwork, IEPs, and data collection. Stacy seeks out advice and information when needed to strengthen her skills and gain additional perspective. Stacy will continue to be an asset to this district and will continue to do great things for our students. So congratulations, Stacy, on receiving tenure in our district.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Are you shaking everybody's hands? Oh, okay. Why? We've been there the whole time.
There you go. Thank you. This one? Aww.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Before you.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you so much.
Okay, now, due to our modified agenda, we are at Board Committee Reports and Actions. First up is the President's Report. I wanted to report back that I was at the MASB Conference over the weekend, which is the Michigan Association of School Boards. The first day I went was the first day of the conference, which was Friday, which was a joint session with the MASA. And so Superintendent Merritt was there with me, and we attended several really informative sessions. And then on Saturday, I was there for training classes, and I was joined by Member Brooks and Member Savage. And they took classes also. We weren't in the same classes, but one of my goals is that all of us can get at least our Level One certification through the MASB. So thank you both for attending, and I know that previously Member Lazzarowitz had gone back in December. And that's about it for me right now. But next is the SPA Committee, which in Member Sudo's absence, I guess, is going to be me. There's no report from the last meeting because we meet on Wednesdays, and as most people know, we've had several school closings on Wednesdays. So the last time the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, the SPA Committee, was supposed to meet, we had to cancel due to the weather. But the next meeting will be Wednesday, March 7, 2019, at 4:30 PM, right here in this room, and everyone's invited to come. It should be a good meeting, as always. Next is the Policy Committee with Member McCoy.
We have not had a meeting since the last board meeting we had, but we do have a meeting in two weeks from tonight, and everybody is welcome to join into that meeting. We have usually a good time. It's a wonderful committee, and come on out.
Okay, next is the Finance and Operations Committee. Member Keough.
Finance and Operations also hasn't met since we had the last board meeting, but our next meeting is next Thursday, February 21st, 4:30 PM here in this room. Again, welcome everybody to join us.
Thank you. Next is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and tonight we have a special guest, Gretchen Ward, the Executive Director of the Educational Excellence Foundation. Welcome, Gretchen.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm excited to be here. I'm usually here supporting our board members who do the update. So thank you for entertaining me tonight, as we had a lot of conflicts with our board members. So I'm pleased to give you our EEF update, and it's a pretty simple one this year, or this month, and it is a save the date. I'm going to request that you all save the date for Friday, August 26th, when we'll be holding Uncorked 2019, which is our largest fundraising event of the year. And for those of you, I'm looking around the table, many of you have attended in the past, and thank you for that. For those of you who haven't attended, I'd just like to share a little bit about what the evening has in store and what the event is. Nick is pulling it up on the website, which you can find the information at EEForkids.org. That's EEFforkids.org is where our information will be. This, again, like I mentioned, is our ninth year, and it's our largest fundraiser of the year. This event alone will bring in between $50,000 and $75,000 for our foundation, and these are critical dollars, because this is what allows us to not only run the foundation, but also be nimble with unrestricted dollars and be able to fund activities and requests that come in from the school throughout the whole year. So as I mentioned, it's a wine tasting and a strolling dinner. So our wine is provided by Bushes throughout the evening. Oh, and I didn't even mention, it's at Fox Hills. Our friends over at Fox Hills have been hosting this for us for years. And we'll have about 550 people joining us that night for our wine tasting and strolling dinner. Bushes helps provide the wine, which will be about 15 tables of wine, sampling about four to eight different types per table, and we'll have an entire room dedicated to craft beer. So throughout the evening, you'll enjoy samplings of those, but if wine or beer isn't to your liking, that is completely fine, because we also have a strolling dinner. So you can eat your way throughout Fox Hills if you don't want to drink your way around Fox Hills. And we're excited this year. We always work with local restaurants to provide a variety of foods, which will guarantee that you won't go hungry. And this year, we are actually bringing in two new restaurants from Detroit. Green Dot Stables and Johnny Noodle King will be coming in from Detroit to join us, where the sous chef from Johnny Noodle King is actually a PCCS grad. He graduated from our culinary program right here with Diana Woodward, decided to stay local in southeast Michigan, and now wants to provide their culinary delicacies with you all at our wine tasting and strolling dinner. So we're thrilled that he wants to come back and bring his restaurants and help support us having a wonderful night, supporting PCCS. So as you're eating and potentially drinking your way around Fox Hills, we also hope that you'll join us in partaking in our silent auction. We're going to have some great items this year, and we have a variety of raffles that go on throughout the evening. You'll be able to get your picture taken on our red carpet. You will be greeted by two of the most fantastic ambassadors you'll receive from Plymouth Canton Schools, Clint Smiley and Anthony Ruela, who are our ambassadors every year to greet you. Thank you, guys, I'm assuming support again this year. And just a wonderful time. It's one of those opportunities where you can look around the room and know that everyone there is to have a great time, raise some money for the foundation, and support Plymouth Canton Schools, and just having a great time. So again, April 26th, I'm going to ask that you save the date. This event is only possible because our community members come out to support us via sponsorships, ticket sales, donations, and we gratefully appreciate that and are looking forward to another great year. I have information about the event, which I'm going to leave out here on the tables. So as you leave, feel free to take one, or anyone in the audience, feel free to take one. And again, if you're not here and watching this, more information can be found at EEFforkids.org. Thank you.
Gretchen, are the tickets already available?
Great question. Our tickets do go on sale typically beginning to mid-March. Once those are available, they'll be posted on our website and on our Facebook pages, and they'll either be available online or at any fresh Bushes location in the area. And tickets are $60. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we are at Citizens Comments. I did not get any cards tonight. Mr. Brandon, did you get any?
Nope.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak that didn't fill out a card? Okay. All right. Next, then, we are at Administrative Reports and Recommendations, and first is the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Borninski. I just want to first start off by thanking our grounds and our Maintenance Department, our Operations Department, for the incredible work that they've done over the last few weeks just trying to ready our schools to keep them safe. Our grounds are, we've just had incredibly frustrating weather, I will say that. It's been a challenge. As we all know, we've had to close school. Today was day six, and that is definitely not a decision that we take lightly. We know the impact that that can have potentially on families, but we always want to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for our students and for our staff. So I want to thank the staff that works to ready the buildings. Hopefully, we will be here tomorrow if weather is pending, or holds up, let's say. But when we talk about that process, we begin three o'clock in the morning, people are out there driving. We want to thank them, because that's always, that's not such a safe route to travel as well. We have early morning phone calls before we make that final decision. So we will always go through that process, take our time, and make the best decision for our students and for our staff and for their safety. With that being said, as I said, hopefully tomorrow is a day in school. In the event that we have to close school from now through the end of the year, the state does allow for three days that we could apply for a waiver. And so as I said, at this time, we're at day six, we would not have to apply for a waiver any day beyond this day. We would go through that process, and hopefully we would be approved. But we are going to keep our minds positively focused on coming to school tomorrow. Such an important day. It is our spring count day, so that's how we receive our state aid. So we just want to make sure that we encourage everyone, if school is in session, be here bright and early, and we hope to have you attend each and every class, in which you will be inspired by our wonderful teaching staff. You know, it's a great place to be in PCCS. Tonight, as I end my report, I just want to take a few moments to recognize the loss of one of our own family members, Salem High School teacher Joan Kalish. She passed away this week after a struggle with cancer. She has had many years of service to our community, to our students. Her life is really, it's represented as really the work of all educators, putting students first. I think our students would always describe her as such a compassionate person, even for the few, through her last few months here, her focus was always on making sure that her students were taken care of. And so she, when I think about her and the impact that she's had on so many lives, it really just serves as a reminder to me of this important work that we do, that we do impact lives, and I can only hope to leave that legacy as well. And so we just want to take an opportunity to remember her, and if you would mind just joining me in a moment of silence for Joan. Joan, once again, she will always be remembered, and the impact that she has had on the lives of our students and families here in PCCS will never be forgotten.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt. Next is Teaching and Learning with Dr. Bender. Unfortunately, we're not able to do the School Improvement Plan Highlights from Dodson tonight, but we have several other important items.
Thank you, President Borninski, and good evening, Members of the Board of Education. This evening, we're excited to have a team share with you the wide range of activities, community service, and athletic experiences for our students at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. By engaging in these experiences, students have the opportunity to explore areas of interest, work towards the betterment of our community, and develop a high level of skill. Participating in these activities contributes to the development of the whole child, including cognitive, physical, social, and emotional well-being. And this evening, here to get us started is our Director of Elementary Education, Maureen Malloy.
Hello.
Hi, Maureen.
Nice to be here. Thanks for having me tonight. Tonight, we will share with you some highlights for the clubs, activities, and athletic experiences that are offered for our K-12 students. The work we do both in and out of the classroom is a direct correlate to our school and district mission and vision and beliefs for our students. We recognize that the extended opportunities, both in and out of the classroom, support our students in becoming capable and involve citizens who employ critical thinking skills and offer contributions to the greater good of our society. The importance of activities in clubs and athletics is centered around connectedness. When students participate in activities with their peers and trusted adults, they are developing a stronger connection to school and learning, a stronger connection to things that interest them or personal strengths, and most importantly, a connection to others. Tonight, the purpose of our coming together and sharing this information with you is our commitment to the Dynamic Plan, and we'll share experiences with you about opportunities for students that support the whole child, from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. Tonight, you will hear about the extended enrichment experiences and understand and learn more about how decisions are made around clubs, clubs, activities, and programs based on the needs and interests of our students in each of our elementary schools. Many, many benefits, you know, of participating in athletics and activities and clubs. Experiences for all of our students, whether in kindergarten or 12th grade, have a positive impact. Participation in activities fosters a sense of belonging, and we know when you feel like you belong, you want to do better. You want to contribute. You want to participate, and you're motivated. You feel good about yourself, and when you feel good about yourself, you want to help others feel good about themselves. And so participation in athletics and clubs positively contributes to that motivation and academic success, and that positive social-emotional learning that we're very much focused on in Plymouth Canton. We think about opportunities for students to learn from failed trials, to foster responsibility, to gain perspective of, around themselves and their own thinking and the thinking of others. We know that opportunities in activities, clubs, and athletics strengthen and build strong relationships, help to see another person's perspective, and learn to work with adults in a different way and a different light. Activities and athletics offer the opportunity of, for students to teach one another and offer support to someone in need, and build on their own personal strengths to share that with others, other people that they're working with. We also think about the overall wellness of our students. When students are participating and actively involved in athletics, clubs, or activities, it's a natural opportunity to improve and maintain that physical health and well-being and mental health as well. So tonight, at the elementary level, I'll share information with you about opportunities for our elementary-level students. Mr. Ruela will talk with you tonight about information and opportunities for our middle-level students, and Hale Hurd and his team will talk with you about opportunities for the high school. At the elementary level, we offer a wide variety of experiences for students beyond the classroom, but they're not the same at every single building. And this is because we really are committed to building on the interests and the needs of students in a particular building, although you will see some very common opportunities across all of our buildings. So we're mindful of that, but we're also equally as mindful to include these interests of a particular school community. So it's all about the balance. So our elementary clubs, you'll see noted at the top or on the slide over here. These are clubs that you would see across most of our schools, if not all of our schools. And things like Girls on the Run, that's a connection with the Y. We have boys running clubs, coding clubs, gardening clubs, a lot of green teams across the district, working on sustainability. Also, the one that's not listed up there is the, well, it's really more of an activity, so I'll just go on to that, is around our, our community financial partnership, where we have student-run credit unions in all of our schools. At the elementary level, the activities are, they're a high-impact experience. Some occur during the school day, some occur after the school day, some are connected to some partnerships with the high school, with organizations, and a lot of times, activities just kind of naturally and organically occur through the interests of our students and our families. Our elementary service projects are typically driven by a student interest, or a staff interest, or a family interest, or maybe collectively around something that's important to the school overall. Service learning at the elementary is wide range. There's just a wide range of opportunities, and students really have a concrete, you know, at the elementary level, we want it to be concrete and visible for them. And so a lot of our service learning projects focus around collections, because that's a way for students to be able to see what they're doing and how their work, how their hard work can impact others in the community and in their school. And so these are some examples on the, on the slide around service learning for our students. We continue to keep an open mind at the elementary level around the countless opportunities for interest groups, clubs, and service projects, and our, and our building leaders are very much interested in authentic learning for our students, and so we continue to talk as a team of leaders and share ideas so that we can have more commonality across the buildings. And so we do that on a pretty regular basis, and, and good ideas are shared and extended. Okay? At this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Anthony Ruela, who will talk about middle school activities.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. Good evening, everyone. So as our students move from elementary to middle school, they continue their transition from a self-centered point of view, more self-centered point of view, things where they see the world really through their own eyes, to a perspective where they are more able to, or better able to, fully consider and appreciate the rights, feelings, and perspectives of others. Along with this intellectual development, it's balanced, maybe sometimes conflicting, by a student's innate, like in adolescence, just their need to be independent. So our students really, really want to be independent, but they also want this connectedness, and they want to see themselves as a part of something bigger than themselves. And that's really a challenge for students. And they're going through this rapid physical and emotional development, and all of that combined into a huge pot of stuff, just in this adolescence, really what makes these students absolutely the, the best people in the world to be around. And it's really, I'm really excited to share with you just some of the fabulous things that our middle schools are doing to provide students with experiences that honor their valuing of peer relationships, balanced with their need to express their individual freedom, and to really explore a variety of personal interests. So I'm really proud tonight to share you, with you, some of the things that our middle school communities are doing. So as students move through adolescence, their experiences play an increasing role in fostering their brain development, and that really helps them make sense of the world. Ms. Malloy talked about concrete experiences. So as kids move into middle school, we want to build upon that concrete and start to bring in a little bit more of the abstract, but it really needs to have some connections to something real, because middle schoolers are just really excited to learn new things, but they have to see the connections between themselves and what they're learning. And they, that interest, their personal interests and that connection to- And that interest, their personal interest, and that connection to their lives as a whole, and there needs to be relevance there. So, to meet these needs, our middle schools provide a wide variety of opportunities to participate in clubs and organizations that meet academic, social, as well as extracurricular interests of students. Ms. Malloy mentioned earlier that, you know, things that you'll see will be present in many buildings, but not necessarily all buildings, because at the middle school, like in the elementary, we really need to meet the needs of the students who are in front of us, and we really work hard to make sure that when students bring an interest to a building administrator or to a teacher, we look for ways to support that interest, because it's active learning for students, right? What does it take if I have this club that I want to start? What's the process that actually goes through? Do I get, how do I get an advisor? How do I learn how to secure space and time and invite others? And that's all great learning for students. So, that's why you'll see some places, some buildings will have very specific clubs that meet students' interests, and that interest may not have percolated in one of our other middle schools. But like Ms. Malloy mentioned, we are always talking at the middle level, sharing information, sharing what we're doing from building to building. So, there may be a situation where, you know, ideas will translate between buildings, and we look for opportunities to take what someone is doing and really grow that across the middle schools. What you see on the slide in front of you, just a few examples, NJHS, National Junior Honor Society, an academic service organization that exists in all of our middle schools. Sometimes, some of our club names vary from middle school, so up there on the slide, you see Student Council, but while all of our middle schools have some sort of student leadership organization, some buildings call it Student Council, some may call it Student Leadership, it just may, you know, vary from building to building. You also see competitive clubs up there, such as Robotics, Science Olympiad, Math Counts, which provide students with an opportunity to test their academic mettle with, against other students in local, state, and sometimes national competitions. Ms. Malloy mentioned earlier about partnerships with the community. You see Student Run Credit Union, which exists in all of our middle schools, again, a partnership with Community Financial, who, you know, just does a tremendous job. They come in, students actually interview for their positions, really working on developing skills that students will use throughout their lifetime. Heart and Soul is the middle school version of Girls on the Run, which is a partner with, partnership with Plymouth YMCA. But there's also multiple clubs up there that are building-specific, Diversity Council, Gay-Straight Alliance, Black Student Union, things that have come and risen to the interest level of the student body, and then have followed processes where building administrators have supported those students' beliefs and allowed for the formation, allowed a vehicle for the formation of those organizations. Speaking of experiences that help our students grow and stretch their thinking, students at the middle level participate in a wide variety of activities. Sixth-grade camp is a multi-day overnight experience where building staff and brave parent chaperones escort students on a co-curricular trip, where they participate in a variety of team-building and academic activities that are aligned with the sixth-grade Michigan Academic Standards for Science. In addition to camp, the next few things you see up there are competitions. Similar to the clubs, these are standalone competitions, the National Spelling Bee, National Geographic Geography Bee, U.B. the Chemist Challenge, all of those are multi-level competitions that have local, state, and national competitions, I should say, and we've had students compete all the way to the national level in multiple ones of those areas. More locally, the Plymouth Rotary Four-way Test, gosh, I might ask Mr. Smiley, but that seems like we've been, we've been doing that for as long as I can remember.
Me, too.
And you've been here a while, Mr. Smiley. In addition, our students, when we look at performing arts, all of our band and choir programs participate in the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Festival annually, and our programs always represent themselves well. At the school level, whether it's art shows, talent shows, drama performance, all buildings have activities that are opportunities for students to showcase their tremendous talents. And then finally, each building meets our students' needs for socialization and peer connectedness by hosting events such as dances, activity nights, and PBIS recognition events. So, mentioned earlier that middle school's a time where students are really trying to figure out where they fit, in their school, in their community, and how that connects them to the world at large. And like the elementary schools, our middle schools work hard to facilitate experiences where students have the opportunity to give back to their community and serve others. Listed here are just a few of the service projects that our schools engage in, and you can see some are larger projects where our schools are partnering with organizations such as the Red Cross, Salvation Army for drives, right? But there's also more personal types of connections and projects that our students have, where they're connecting with local veterans groups, or a school that has economic needs somewhere in the county, where the students really can connect with the people that they're serving. And bringing it even more local, you see up there the SJ 5K, where our schools will participate and support just a tremendous event in the community that brings the entire community. Or even the rake-and-run, where our students go out into the community and do some yard cleanup, really taking pride in how their community looks. All just wonderful opportunities for students to give back and connect with the people around them. The final component that we're going to be speaking about, that I'll be sharing with you tonight, is middle school athletics, and for that, I'm going to welcome Mr. Smiley, West Middle School Principal and Middle School Athletic Director, to the microphone.
Sir? You don't need to keep that. So, I'm Clint Smiley, I'm the principal at West Middle School by day, and then in the afternoons, I'm one of the co-athletic directors for the middle school program. The other athletic director is Chris Moore, who is the assistant principal at Pioneer. And then, at each of the middle schools, we have an athletic liaison. It's a teacher at the building who takes on the opportunity to guide middle school athletics as well as supervise a lot of the events. So, if you look at, I don't know if you guys have a slide or the slide that's up here, we have a, we are in a league of our own, and I mean that in two different ways. One, we have an exceptional middle school athletic program, but we also are in a league of our own, meaning we're not in the KLAA or any other sort of league that competes against, you know, Livonia, or Wayne Westland, or Novi, or Northville. We compete against ourselves. We have five schools, and we have six sports. And the six sports, we start out at the beginning of the school year, and we do cross-country for both boys and girls. It's one of the sports that is available to sixth graders, so it's an awesome introduction to middle school, because a lot of the sixth graders will join middle school, or get to middle school, and then join cross-country right at the beginning of the year. We probably average about 150 to 200 kids on each of the five teams. So, it's a, there's a picture up there of the final league meet, which takes place usually on a beautiful day in October, and we're out at Cass Benton Park, and there's like a thousand middle school kids running in that event. It's spectacular if you get a chance to come out and see it. We go from cross-country into the fall season, or the late fall season, which is girls' volleyball, and then we go, we go from that, that goes up till Christmas time. After Christmas time, we do girls' basketball, girls' basketball, or I'm sorry, boys' basketball, and then boys' basketball slides into girls' basketball, and that's right where we're at right now. Boys' basketball just ended last week, girls' basketball was supposed to start today, it's going to be pushed back, and we're going to start tomorrow. And then, when basketball ends, we go into swimming, and we use, we don't have pools at our middle school, so the five schools use the three pools that are, or the two pools that are up at the high school. And so, our practices are a little bit later, because the kids go home and then go up to the high schools. After, well, swimming is going on, we, at our buildings, are doing wrestling for both boys and girls, and then when those seasons end, it's right around spring break time, and when we come back from spring break, we have boys' and girls' track, and those take place. We have one track, and that track is at Liberty Middle School. We're thankful for the last bond proposal to build that track there, because we used to use the track at Central Middle School. So, we have one track, and the students basically practice on the grounds, like at West and East and Discovery and Pioneer, and then when we have our meets, we go over and do meets on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays over at that one middle school track. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. So, you know, as I said earlier, you know, middle school's just a foundational time, and I think my colleagues in the buildings just do a wonderful job of preparing students with a wide variety of extracurricular activities, co-curricular activities, and really, not only is it preparation for life, but it's preparation for their experiences, which in one of the most amazing and unique educational experiences in the state, if not the nation, and that's the park. And so, to tell us more about our experiences at the park, I'm going to call Mr. Hurd and his team.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our students at the high school level have a wide variety of opportunities, whether it be in activities or athletics, as it, whether they're attending Starkweather Academy or Plymouth Canton Educational Park. So, tonight, I have our assistant principals for athletics and activities here to take us through some of the highlights of the programs our students are involved. So, I'd like to invite Mr. Vernon Crump, the Canton High School Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities, to the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I get started to talk about the high school a little bit, I just want to introduce my other two colleagues from Plymouth, Luke Swanson, and Salem, Brian Samowski. At the high school, to meet the needs of our students, we want to provide as many opportunities as we can for students to learn outside of the classroom. We, oh, I'm sorry. Some of the things that we focus on is academics, our academics, we have a high standard of academics for our students. We check in with our student athletes and activities every five weeks. We want to have athletics and activities to be an extension of the classroom, and also use it as an academic intervention. We want to build strong leaders through our outside organizations, our school organizations, like Council for Athletic and Academic Teams, and through the club approval process, as we talked about earlier. We also want to build good citizens and competitors. To provide as many opportunities as we can, we have 48 different teams offered at each high school. We have ninth-grade JV and varsity teams, as well as non-cut sports opportunities each season. Luke is going to tell us about the clubs and activities.
Absolutely. So, I think one of the kind of crowning jewels, I think, for our district is the number of opportunities that we have for kids. It's, with a district this size, and especially with a campus of the size that we do, the amount of resources there are really phenomenal. And Nick, would you mind clicking on our club listing here?
Sure.
It's one thing to say you have 100 active or inactive clubs, and it's another thing to see it. So, one of the best things that we do is to provide opportunities for students to learn and to have it be an extension of the classroom. So, a personal example of this, when I was a social studies teacher not too long ago, I was also a mock trial coordinator at the high school. And so, what you'd see is that kids, when they're engaged in this classroom content, would develop these really strong interests, and then they'd go and they'd find something on this club listing that connected to that, and it allowed them to really do some really great career exploration in a way that other districts just can't provide. As I look about this, look around at surrounding communities, they have about 15 or 20 clubs. But we, because of our size, can offer an extended amount of opportunities to kids. And one of the best things that we do is to really, is to allow kids to create their own club, something that we don't see a lot, but they can become leaders, find something that they're passionate about, come down and visit one of the three of us and talk about this passion, and we can guide them through the process of creating this club, finding out facilities. It's a really unique experience that we just, we don't provide everywhere in the world. And I'm thinking of clubs recently, like the Ultimate Frisbee Club, like who would have thought of that as an awesome opportunity? But there's this group of 15 or 20 kids that, you know, this is their passion, and in the spring, they figured out how to get together after school with a teacher and do something that's really fun. So, building community and doing a lot of great stuff there. Nick, would you mind jumping back for me? Thank you, sir. Awesome. So, outside of those club opportunities are a host of other activities that we provide for kids, with a strong teacher or school sponsor that's there with them. These are organizations where there's a staff sponsor, and kids are, like I said before, finding something that they connect with in the classroom and then exploring on it. Ones that are new this year that aren't offered everywhere is our Unified Sports Program. This is special needs students with sponsors and with other students, regular gen-ed students that are competing. We're part of the, one of the first conferences in the country to provide this as an opportunity for kids. It's really a phenomenal experience for all kids, and if you get a chance to go out to one of their home games, they keep getting canceled because of snow days, but if you get a chance to go out, next Monday, there you go, at Salem, what time?
Six.
Six. It's a phenomenal school-community event, and one where, because we have a unified team, it's not Canton against Salem or Plymouth, this is a park mentality and a district mentality, and something we can all really get behind. Outside of those, we have a host of non-affiliated clubs, and these are, again, a situation where there was a group of community members and kids that decided that this was something that we wanted for our community, and the district through a process, a really good process, provided them with an opportunity to do that. And the picture at the bottom of our varsity field hockey team is a great example of that, that they just went through their inaugural season with a group of kids and some really phenomenal staff, and they're off and running and rolling, and again, providing another great opportunity for kids. Now, an extension of that, too, is work that we have at Starkweather. And in talking with them, there's a number of new clubs that they've created recently, and again, as we talked about with the elementary and middle school administrators here, a lot of this is catered to the needs of the kids in those individual buildings, right? We always want to create an environment where kids are supported and they feel special and included. And the Anti-Bullying Club is one that was just launched in the last year. Again, a group of kids that wanted to get together, do something for their school community, and do something that connects them with the outside community as well. So, another really great opportunity. Along with that, we wanted to provide you with some general numbers that we have for involvement, and how many kids are getting involved in these things. The first four numbers up there are athletic participation by season, and one thing that we're really proud of, the three of us, is that these numbers continue to go up. And we do, there are a number of sports every season that where we make cuts, right, where we have to limit our roster size, but there's also sports where we don't have to, that are non-cut sports, where any individual can go out and participate with these teams. It's a tremendous thing. And what that tells me, those numbers tells me, is that there's something special and authentic that's going on here, where kids are finding out that this is a great opportunity, and they're going out and they're participating, and we call them magnet programs. If you come out in the spring and watch Salem's track and field teams with rosters above 100, it's a really great thing to see. And one thing we did, because we wanted to see how this extended on into our clubs and activities, last year, we calculated the number of kids, reaching out to all these advisors and sponsors that were participating in our activities programs. And so, over 3,000 kids on our campus, so that means over half, are all involved in this great stuff that's happening. And so, what we see, and there's kids that are involved in both, and we're going to have an alumni come up here in just a second and talk about what that looks like for her, but it's really amazing to see how many kids get involved in so many things and find ways to balance that workload of class and what they're doing outside of class. One thing we also wanted to show you was what this looks like and how it connects to academic success in school. And what we see is that there's a real, there's a great connection between participating in these programs and the supports that we provide through academic intervention. You have counselors, you have coaches, you have us running and supporting these kids in a variety of ways, and we see that this connects to academic success. So, when we sit down with parents and families and individual kids, we talk about these programs as being great vehicles to being successful in academics, and then hopefully beyond that. So, I'm going to bring up an alumni, a former student of mine, Maura, who's going to talk a little bit about her experience. programs as being great vehicles to being successful in academics, and then hopefully beyond that. So, I'm going to bring up an alumni, a former student of mine, Maura, who's going to talk a little bit about her experience with all of this, because we really, I know you guys want to hear from the kids more than you want to hear from us. So, let's bring her up and have her talk a little bit about what that looks like.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank Mr. Swanson for inviting me here, and also thank you all for allowing me to speak. So, I graduated from Plymouth High School in 2015. I recently graduated from Michigan last December with a bachelor's in sociology and Spanish, and I'm hoping to continue my education with a PhD in sociology. So, fingers crossed, because all those applications are coming out in the next coming weeks. So, Mr. Swanson wanted me to come to speak about my involvement in activities and clubs while I was at Plymouth. So, I was part of the Student Congress in Plymouth for four years. I was also part of the Honor Society my junior and senior year, and I had the honor of being president of Congress my senior year of high school. So, I would say that definitely all the involvement that I partake in was very influential in helping me shape my own personal growth, but also my professional and career objectives. So, through Congress and through Honor Society, I was able to gain both professional and personal skills and experiences, and both of them were very fundamental in helping shape what I wanted to do in my career and what I want to do as an individual within a community, but also as an individual within myself and within my district. So, I think both those opportunities and the opportunities that I had at high school and throughout my career as a student at PCCS has been very fundamental in shaping what I want to do in the future, but also has helped me gain a better understanding of who I am as a person, and has helped shape my passions within my community and what I want to do globally. So, I am a very strong supporter of PCCS, and I applaud you for everything that you have done. So, thank you.
So, I'm going to introduce my colleague here, Brian Samowski, who's going to talk a little bit about the extension of this and some of the other things our groups do.
All right. So, like the elementary and middle school level, at the high school, we also do plenty of service work, giving back to the community, community service. Through all the clubs that, and activities that Luke talked about, and then along with the athletics that Vernon talked about, there are some kind of service project going on pretty much every week. One thing I can talk to specifically about Salem, a few things we do, we do our Reading with Rocks program, where we go around to different elementary schools, and we take our athletes and we'll read in the elementary schools. It is really, it's a really cool thing to see the kids sign up for the elementary schools that they went to. And so, they love going back and finding those old teachers and hugging them, and then, you know, we have to then rush them out to get the bus to get back to school on time. But it is one of those cool experiences. Another thing we do in the community, it's called Trick or Treat with the Rocks. And this past October, we had about five hundred of our elementary kids come for free. And then each team has a tent set up through the high school, and the parents come through with their elementary kids, and they trick or treat, and each team has a theme, and they dress up, and they give candy, and they play games with the kids. And just trying to build that connection with the elementary school to the high school. You know, being in the community, some, some people think the park might be a scary place. So, we're always trying to build the connection with the high schoolers to the elementary school to show them how great of a place it is. And then to end that Trick or Treat event, our kids said, because it's free, let's have a donation box at the end. So, they had a donation box. They took all that money that they earned at that, went and bought toys, and then donated those toys to the Mott's Children's Hospital right before Christmas. So, those are just a few examples of giving back and community service that we do at the park. A next thing, each school has a Hall of Fame. We all started these within the past, I'd say, five years. This is a really cool experience, because you get to see those teams and those athletes come back from the mid-seventies and how much they appreciated their time at Salem, or Canton, or the early two thousands at Plymouth. The picture of Salem, that's a nineteen eighty-one wrestling team that went undefeated during the regular season. And to hear their stories and hear them talk and how much they really enjoyed it, you can tell the lifelong impact athletics and activities have had on these kids. I know Vernon's second one is this weekend, so I think it's Saturday, so I'm sure if you want to attend, he has the details for that. We had ours this past fall, and it went really well. And then lastly, athletics, providing opportunities beyond high school with scholarships and kids going on to play. The three pictures on the slide are from our signing days last year. Each of us have probably, depending on the year, twenty to thirty athletes that go on to compete in, at the college level, a lot of Division One and Division Two scholarships. So, again, just providing that opportunity to go beyond the park and play and compete at different high schools around the nation. And that wraps it up from the high school. So, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Hurd. So, he stole my opening line of thank you, so we got that out of the way. But tonight, you've had the opportunity to hear some of the wide variety, tremendous opportunities we have available for our students, K-12 and Plymouth Canton Community Schools. And this will not be, we would not be able to provide these experiences if it was not for the tremendous support of the community, members of the Board of Education, the administration, staff, advisors, coaches, families, and students. So, it's been a great experience for our students, as you heard from some of our previous students, and those that are immersed in the programs right now. So, at this time, if there, if anyone may have any questions, they may want to have answered.
Member Keough.
So, on Slide forty-three, the high school clubs and activities, what's the difference between these programs and the ones that were on the list that you pulled up from the Google Docs?
So, these are organizations that are part of the union contract schedule view with the teachers. So, these are positions that are paid in additional stipend beyond what the other clubs are paid. So, two hundred dollar stipend for our regular clubs that are on that listing. And those, we have determined, you know, are additional workload. Most of them are competition-based, require performances or creating or setting up events. So, there's an additional responsibility there and additional workload for our kids. And so, those are, we've designated, it's kind of a separate category away from the two hundred dollar clubs. Those are also, there's a different philosophy behind the smaller club organizations, in that the, they're meant to be very fluid, so kids can come and go as they please and try things out. And I think that's a really cool and unique thing, that kids can go and just connect with kids. Maybe they do it once, maybe they do it for four years of high school, but it provides another avenue for kids to do something and make connections with kids that might have a similar interest to them. I'm thinking of like the games club, where they're, they're playing, you know, Warhammer after school.
Right.
And it's a great opportunity for, for kids to connect in a, in a way, and find kids that have similar interests. And it makes that place a home, when, you know, sixty-five hundred kids and three hundred adults on one campus can seem pretty big. Here, we've created an opportunity for them to, to find a niche and do something powerful.
Okay. Well, that actually brings up another question for me, then. Is this, how is the funding of these, not this list, but it sounds like these are not funded. Actually, explain the funding between the groups on these PCP clubs and activities, the ones on the slide, and then the different sports programs, for example.
Are you looking for individuals of how they, how they pay or do things, or?
So, both from a student's perspective, as well as what the district is contributing to, to support those.
Okay. It varies a lot. The, I would say the clubs and activities programs are very much self-sufficient, and so they may go to an administrator and ask for something. We might try funding to support, try to find funding to support what they want to do, but it varies a lot. Our sports do as well. There's a group of sports that are school, school-funded that we have listed in our handbook. Now, our funding doesn't go all the way to cover all the costs for their things. A lot of times, the booster clubs will make up the difference for those things. There's a group of sports that are entirely self-funded, meaning that there are booster clubs that go and create revenue to support those teams in every way. And then there are the non-affiliated sports groups that are also completely self-funded as well. So, there's a lot of tiers, and it's a very long, very long conversation to have. But yeah, that's, that's the beginning of it.
That'd be something that I'd love to get some more information on, is the funding for those activities, as well as for the different programs. And then, along the same lines, I'm not sure I understand the difference between non-affiliated and self-funded, because they sound the same?
In many ways, they are. The non-affiliated do not have much involvement with our offices, if that makes sense. So, they are, they're student groups that are run by external organizations that use our name, that use our names, but have very little involvement other than that.
Whereas self-funded is what?
They are run through our athletic departments, meaning that we run, we run grades for those kids, we supervise the hiring and firing of their coaches, we, we take, take a look at those kids and, and have a huge involvement in what they're doing.
So, from an economic model, they're the same.
Yeah.
But from a oversight model, they're very different.
Yes, very different, absolutely.
Okay.
That's a great way of putting it.
Thank you.
Member Brooks.
Yeah, you mentioned on the middle school level that you just have all your teams play each other within the district.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At the high school level, I was wondering about your non-cut sports. Are they played, teams played within the district, or are they outside the district also?
No, the high school non-cut sports are, they play outside of the district.
Okay.
Yeah. The only model is the middle school model, where we play each other, and that allows us to really be more flexible. And you saw up there, we actually really have six seasons, right? Two seasons within the fall, the winter, and the spring. And we're able, if we played in outside conferences, there would be additional costs for transportation, and we would, we would lose the flexibility of being able to offer as many sports as we do over as many seasons, and it would reduce student participation. So.
Member McCoyn.
That was a lovely presentation, by the way. Do you, it says on one of the slides, there's about forty percent of the middle school kids participate in an athletic team. Do you have an idea about how many participate in the club or activity outside of athletics?
So, we don't keep as close track on that for a couple of reasons. Like Mr. Swanson mentioned, our club and activity participation at the middle level, we really encourage students to try a variety of things. So, it tends to be a lot more fluid. So, we just don't track that portion as carefully.
Okay. And then I had another question about the high school numbers. I'm assuming that you have athletes who play multiple sports.
Absolutely.
To get to that, like thirty-nine hundred. And would that be the same for activities, or?
Yes, absolutely. I would say it's very common to come across a kid who's involved in multiple sports and a couple of clubs and a couple of those larger organizations.
So, those numbers aren't people, then? That's participation of a given?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And so then, would that also capture the non-affiliated?
No, and again, that's because we don't have much involvement.
Okay, so, so that could be an additional whatever.
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And then, it'd be interesting to see the GPA of the kids participating in activities other than marching band, but I guess it would probably be really difficult to capture.
We did discuss that, and there is a way for, in the clubs that are very fluid, we would be very hard to do.
Oh, yeah.
But there are some of the organizations that we have discussed tracking on a more detailed version, and we could get you some numbers for those.
I just think it would be kind of interesting to see. I was.
Absolutely.
Actually, Member Keough would ask that question by email, and so I'm hoping that we can get that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this side?
Got one question.
Okay. Member Liz Arowitz.
Thank you. Sixth grade camp, how come it's not offered for all middle schools? Just East Liberty and Pioneer, and Discovery?
Yeah. And it kind of goes back to the building, the building community and what the, what the community is looking for. And then, the other piece is the actual staffing of the camp. If we can't get enough chaperones or staff members to, you know, that have the ability to spend two nights, you know, leave their family for, for three days and two nights with students.
Where's the camp at?
So, Howell is one, and then I'm blocking on the other camp. But there's two different sites, two different camps that we use. Howell Nature Center, and I'm blocking on the other one. But I could find out for you if you.
And there's two nights that the parents stay with the kids, or?
Yes.
And that's when, during the year?
Depends. Either, I think Liberty goes in the winter, East goes in the fall, and Pioneer, I believe, goes in the fall.
Thank you.
So, it's, it's actually really, like, when we used to go back at Central, it was lots of times, it was really, really hard to get a slot, just because they're booked all year long.
See, I never went to camp, and it sounds pretty fun.
Yeah. It's a great, it's a great experience. Yeah, no, it's a great, it's a wonderful experience.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Member Brooks.
Yeah, I was wondering about the high school non-affiliated clubs. Are the venues for those within the district, or are they, like, I was wondering where the kids shoot target plays?
It varies a lot. They're not, they're not doing that on campus.
Right.
But, but some of them have found, field hockey in particular is one that's going to be using Liberty next fall as a, as a practice facility. So, it really varies a lot, and it is certainly one of our challenges with, with all of these programs that we provide. We are limited in the facilities that we have, so a lot of times, these organizations, and some of our organizations in the district are forced to go off-site, whether it is to the middle schools who graciously allow us to use their facilities, or whether it's to external sites. So, yes, most of them are off-site.
Yeah, because I was wondering about the, like I said, the clay target shooting and the equestrian.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Is there a way we can find out where that is?
Yes. Yeah, we could do that, yeah.
Other questions? Member Keough.
I love that we're celebrating our athletics with the Hall of Fame. What are we doing to celebrate the other programs that we have, like the Robotics Club and the Marching Band, which has had really strong performances over the years? And, you know, how are we highlighting those to our, to our alumni, to our community, and really emphasizing the contribution that they, that those groups have had?
That brings up an important point, where you want to always acknowledge those that have come before us. And so, I'm not aware of anything that's in place at the particular moment. I know we have a pretty extensive showcase for our band. When you go through Plymouth, you see a very large one that's showing accomplishments over the years. But there hasn't been any discussion that I know of about, like, a Hall of Fame or some way to celebrate those past accomplishments or bring some of those members back. But that would be something that we can discuss and possibly do in the future.
I think it's important to have those people that are participating in those other key activities and programs that have, especially that have experienced success, to see that modeled by the district recognizing those things and recognizing those achievements. And I think that sometimes we spend more time on athletics than we do on the activities and the other programs that are there. And I'd love to see us do more to highlight those other activities, whether it be Science Olympiad, or whether it be the robotics program and the fantastic success that the district has had in the robotics program, and really continuing to highlight that throughout the schools and the, the history for all the students to see that this is something that we value.
And as well, we do showcase all of the banners and things like for the robotics when they won the world championship. Those banners and trophies are displayed within the school buildings itself, but not the individuals that may have participated on that particular team.
Yeah, we have no Hall of Fame for that, though.
No, we don't have a Hall of Fame for that. So.
I think that's something we should look into.
And that'll be something that we can discuss and see what way we can do some acknowledgement of those, those participants from that time.
Okay.
So, I have a question that kind of piggybacks on what Patrick was getting at. I, I see the photos of these kids on their college signing day, and I think that's really exciting for them. But I think there are students that participate in other competitive activities that may be getting scholarships, like, for example, for music or culinary arts or something like that. And do we have something similar for them?
We have an evolving. Um, we have an evolving event that happens around May 1st, the College Decision Day.
Right, but that's for everyone. But what about the kids that maybe specifically got a scholarship for music? Something like that.
Well, we do, um, receive some of those things and then do some acknowledgements for them, but not necessarily staying in the same vein as a college signing day for athletics. But there are some different activities that are worked through our counseling department to acknowledge students that are not necessarily in, within athletics, but also within different clubs and things that may receive an award. So there may not necessarily be a, uh, photos that will be included in this particular presentation, but there may be some other activities that can be brought up to acknowledge those students.
Right, I just think it would be wonderful if we acknowledged, you know, because we have students who excel in so many different areas that if we could acknowledge that also.
I'd love to see a signing day that was for athletics and activities and so that we bring the groups together rather than having it be a separation.
I think, yeah, I think we should celebrate everyone.
And there's been some also, some talk about even acknowledging those students that during a signing day or a choice day for those students that may not necessarily going on to college or universities, but maybe going into the workforce and celebrating that as well as their choice. And that they're, we've prepared them as a district for that opportunity as well. So there's a, a lot of, a lot of, I guess balls up in the air, balloons or whatever you acknowledge, analogy you want to use to try to make sure we're capturing those moments for the students.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a first reading on considering a resolution to purchase additional benchmark assessment system kits for elementary schools. Hopefully, everyone has seen the information in the packet. Dr. Bender, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, President Berninski. Teachers of students in kindergarten through grade two and the elementary ministers are very appreciative of the support of the board to provide each teacher in those grades with their own benchmark assessment system kit. This step has enabled teachers to have greater flexibility in administering the assessment during the winter testing period and will again during this spring. This evening, we're bringing forward for a first reading a resolution to purchase additional kits for teachers in grades three through five. If approved as a final reading later this month, the kits will be able to be purchased in time so that teachers will have them for the spring testing window.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanted to mention, as Dr. Bender said, previously, we did approve these similar kits for the younger grades. And it's my understanding the teachers have found them very, very helpful. I see, I see Ms. Colombo shaking her head. Yes, okay. Okay. Next up, we have action item nineteen oh two fifty-two, which is consider approval of a resolution to change the course name of statistical reasoning in sports. This is a final reading. Do I have a motion on this, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of the resolution to change the course name of statistical reasoning in sports, action item nineteen oh two fifty-two, final reading.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. Dr. Bender, did you want to speak about this a little bit or?
Yes, again, we are very excited about this proposal because it really expands by name and even the, the course content, the, the scope of the experience that the students will have. And so not only gathering information regarding sports, but really statistical reasoning in general. And so we're, we're excited about this possibility.
Yeah, so the name change would be from statistical reasoning in sports to statistical reasoning.
Yes.
Are there any questions or discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next is action item nineteen oh two fifty-three. Consider, consider approval of a resolution to create a new course, Computer Science Essentials. This is a final reading also. Do I have a motion on this, please?
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution to create a new course, Computer Science Essentials, action item eighteen oh two fifty-three, final reading.
I second it.
Motion was made by, made by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Dr. Bender, do you want to explain this one also?
Yes, thank you. This would be the first course in the pathway in the STEM Academy for computer science. It'll offer students the opportunity to experience the major topics, big ideas and practices used by computing professionals to solve problems. The course will empower students to develop computational thinking skills while building confidence that prepares them to continue through advanced computer science courses. The curriculum will include hands-on experiences and extended learning opportunities such as mentorships, internships, and community outreach. We're bringing this forward for a final reading this evening.
Is there discussion? I just want to say that I am, I am very pleased that we're expanding the STEM offerings with a new pathway. So I think that's great.
Lot of community interest.
Yep. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next up is action item nineteen oh two fifty-four. Consider approval of a resolution to purchase science materials for grades six through eight. It's also a final reading. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the resolution to purchase science materials for grades six through eight, final reading, action item nineteen oh two fifty-four.
I second it.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Dr. Bender?
Yes, thank you, President Berninski. This evening, we're recommending for a final reading the purchase of inquiring and questioning our world through science and technology for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Vetting and piloting this curriculum resource demonstrates that it is aligned with all three dimensions of the Michigan Science Standards, which are connected with the next generation science standards. iQuest, as the materials are known, is student-driven, research-based, and supported by the National Science Foundation. This curriculum resource also incorporates a literacy focus implementing reading, writing, and talking about science. iQuest will provide learning experiences that are aligned to the expectations of the M-Step, which will be completely aligned to the Michigan Science Standards in two thousand twenty.
Are there any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next is action item nineteen oh two fifty-five. Consider approval of a resolution for non-resident school of choice, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. It's a final reading. I need a motion on this, please.
Madam President, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for non-resident school of choice, two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, action item nineteen oh two fifty-five, final reading.
I second that.
Motion was made by Member Kehoe and I heard Member Savage first for the second. Okay, is there a discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Next is action item nineteen oh two fifty-six. Consider approval of a, of a resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. It's a final reading. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the resolution to approve the enrollment of non-resident students of PCCS employees for the nineteen, or the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, final reading, action item nineteen oh two fifty-six.
I second it.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Okay, next is Finance and Operations. And we have an action item. It's a first and final reading. It's action item nineteen oh two fifty-seven. Consider approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen mid-year budget amendment. Okay, we're going to have a presentation.
Hello. I'm Debbie P. Az. I'm your Chief Financial and Operations Officer, and I too have a cold. So I'm going to do my best to just get through this really brief presentation. We discussed this, seems like forever ago, at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on January the seventeenth. We then prepared all the documents and had a lengthy conversation that evening. Stephanie Trotter is here, our Director of Finance and Accounting. She was instrumental in creating all the documents before you. You have a summary sheet and a whole bunch of numbers, but is my, how I like to do this is we talked about that at the subcommittee meeting. Member Kehoe will highlight that in a minute. I just wanted to give the community a brief synopsis of all the words and all the language. So tonight, we're going to go through a brief, like five slides or six slides that go through the budget amendment process, which takes months and months and months. But I wanted to summarize it for you for the board's pleasure and for the community. Nick gave me the clicker and I'm not even using it. So tonight, we're going to go through the initial to mid-year budget reconciliation process. You don't have to take copious notes because we'll have a general fund summary that follows. And then we'll talk about some historical financial data, which is helpful to put, put all this information into context. So basically, when you have to adopt your budget in June of every year, you don't know a whole lot about what's going on in the fall. You don't have your student count. You don't have necessarily a state aid act. And so you do a whole bunch of estimating in that June original adoption. And so in that original adoption, we had revenue less expenditures with a use of fund equity of about nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Since then, many things happened. So the first thing that happens is you have some purchase orders that were outstanding and approved. However, we didn't receive the goods or the services weren't rendered until after June thirtieth, which means that we're in last year's budget, but actually the expense occurs this year. So that's the four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar number that you see there. In addition, you have what's now called Section one forty-seven C. So it's all part of the reform of retirement for Michigan public school employees. And though all those numbers aren't final until October of the year. And so we had an adjustment, a net adjustment of about seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. Then we had other revenue items and other expenditure items. Obviously, based on the three million dollars up and the expenditures adjustments of nine hundred and thirty, they went in a positive direction. So all, all in, our total adjustments of about two point eight million dollars all go in a favorable direction. And so it takes our nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of what we thought was going to be use of fund equity and turned it into about one point eight million dollars of additions to the fund equity. And so some of the reasons for those changes are as follows. We have adjustments to revenue. Basically, the taxable values in the area have recovered. And so particularly in our case in the non, the non-homestead, so commercial property. And so that has increased significantly. The MIPSers is that one forty-seven C, the UAAL is the unfunded actuarially determined liability. That increased our funding as well. We also had increases to our enhancement millage revenue because that's also associated with increasing property tax values. Stephanie was able to do a long-term cash flow and invested some of the money that you had that wasn't needed immediately for payroll and was able to increase revenues by about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And then we had some additional one-time money that was from the Act eighteen, our transportation, which is our, Act eighteen is our countywide special education millage. And because of some adjustments to their original amounts, there was an additional allocation of about eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars that came to us one time from pass-through Wayne County RISA. So those were the adjustments to revenue. Then the adjustments to expenditures are, we finally hired, I think Liz is done almost hiring. We had one more tonight. But we had all the increase in salary and benefits due to all the finalized salary and finalized staff placements. So we had some enrollment changes. We had some personnel turnover. We had some last-minute retirements. And all those changes that come through in the fall are finally now kind of set for a little while. We also had a decrease into purchase services, primarily removal of the accounting software. We had about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was set aside to buy new software. And Stephanie and I are still evaluating the current software. And so we may table that for now. We removed it from the budget. And if, if at a later date, we want to come back to you and request that, I, I will do so. But right now, we're going to remove that because that's not going to be an expenditure in this fiscal year. In addition, we increased some supplies and materials related to the timing of those purchase orders for textbooks. You just adopted one this evening, so we'll, we'll have to make an adjustment for that as well. But that's not included in this mid-year assignment amendment because it kind of like the chicken before the egg. You know, Mike has got a first read tonight and a second read will follow, so we'll get that next time. And then there's some increase in capital outlay related to timing of the prior year purchase orders. So again, we had a couple of trucks that we bought that we ordered in the spring, but didn't come until the summer, those kinds of things. So if the goods aren't received or the services aren't rendered, it's an expenditure in this fiscal year, even though it was budgeted in the prior fiscal year. So all those changes are the reason for the amendment we are requesting that you approve this evening. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things. Because we are a minimum foundation school district, there's two very important numbers to us. As Plymouth Camp Community Schools, one is enrollment. It's very key because that's the only way you can really have any control over your increase in revenues. And as you see, we were, had a high of almost nineteen thousand kids at one point in our last ten years' history. But we're still laying around the seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-five is where we are today. So we're, we're growing, but still not where we were. The second number that's very important to you is foundation allowance because that's the only way we garner revenue, right? Enrollment times foundation allowance gives you your ceiling. So this shows that we were up in the seventy-six hundred category. We had a reduction. And now we're going up now. In the last several years, have had several increases. That reduction, that four hundred and seventy dollars per kid cut, has really never kind of come back because if you take the rate of inflation during that period of time, we're, we're not really exactly where we were back in two thousand nine, ten. That's for all districts across the state. And finally, I wanted to show some historical financial data on our fund equity. So we were very lucky to be part of the enhancement millage for Wayne County. We're in year three of a six-year enhancement millage. So as you can see, the enhancement millage kicked in in sixteen, seventeen. And so we've been increasing our fund equity. We've used some of that enhancement millage to put towards classrooms by furniture and equipment and to do some enhancements throughout our buildings. But we, we've saved some of it for a rainy day or when we needed it. And so if you take and look at this graph, this shows in the red what the enhancement millages were in those years and where it sits today. So a note of caution, that's the reason why we're sitting with a thirty-plus million dollar fund equity is because of the enhancement millage. So I just want to keep that in your forethought as we go forward. We've got three more years to go past this year, but we'll be looking at planning on a long-term basis and for when we have it or don't have it. But that election will be coming up in two thousand twenty. Member Kehoe, I didn't know if you wanted to have any other comments or thoughts based on our FNO conversations?
Yeah, just, I mean, for those of you that don't attend the FNO meetings, we go into the, the budget reconciliation process line by line, detail by detail, looking at each of the different things that are there. And when we see things that are, don't make sense, we have discussions on those things. You know, for example, there was a, some miscategorization for some athletic expenses that were there that got corrected. And that's actually one of the reasons that this report was delayed. before it came back through is we wanted to make sure that that was cleaned up before we presented the things back. You know, welcome your questions at this time. Also, welcome you to come to the FNO meetings when we go through this and see, to see the detail that we go through and see how good stewards the administration is on the community's funding and money and how the, how we don't have much control over the revenue, but we have a very good control over the expense. And as much as I like to have balanced budgets, I really appreciate the fact that we don't have department heads or other people in the organization that are saying, "I've got to spend my budget money." We've always been there to support those budget departments and those heads when they need something, so we encourage them not to waste the money now, and they don't. So that's why, part of the reason why we're seeing some of these, these extra decrease in expenses that come in is because they're not just trying to spend to their budget. So.
Questions?
Thank you very much. And this will be the foundation, then, as we move forward into the budget transformation process for 1920. It's just around the corner. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that this is something that the state requires us to do periodically throughout the year.
Yeah, we do two budget amendments. We do one at the mid-year, and then, we do one at the end of the year. So that's why this is a regular occurrence for us. Along the same lines, I'm sorry, there's also reports that we get every month that give you kind of a highlight of the things that are happening. So if there's anything unusual that's occurring from a spending perspective, those are called out on those monthly reports so that we don't get surprised at these amendment periods.
Okay, so Action Item 190257. Consider Approval of the 2018-2019 Midyear Budget Amendment, first and final reading. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we consider approval of the 2018-2019 Midyear Budget Amendment, Action Item 190257, first and final reading.
Second.
Motion was made by Member Kehoe and seconded by Member Brooks. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Just wanted to have a comment and thank Debbie and the whole team for all the hard work that they do in getting this stuff together. It's been a smoother and smoother process every year that I've been on the board, and I really appreciate all the hard work that you guys do.
I also want to say thank you for the very clear explanation. Really good. Okay, we are now at action items and discussion. The first item we have, I emailed everyone about, it's Action Item 190258. Consider Approval of Designating a Representative for Region Eight for the MASB for a three-year term on the MASB Board of Directors. It's a first and final reading. This is for the, a representative to represent our area on the Michigan Association of School Boards Board of Directors. And I did send an email about this because we have several candidates, and I thought in order to expedite things, I would like to hear, I wanted to have someone look into all the individuals who are candidates. And so, Member McCoyn responded to my email saying that she would be happy to research them, so I would like to hear from you about what she found out.
So I looked into all the candidates, and I would say that they are all perfectly qualified. But when I narrowed it down, I felt that because our region includes schools, districts in Wayne County and Oakland County, I felt that because Wayne County has, we have some things that are unique to Wayne County, that a representative that is from Wayne County would be our best choice. And then, I also looked at the information that was sent. Most everyone of the candidates sent in a statement of some kind. And so, then I looked at what they are doing and then what their priorities are. So I am recommending that we vote for Regina Williams. She is on Harborwood's School Board. She's been on there for several years. She has been held Secretary, Vice President, and the President's Officer roles, and she is also a teacher. And one of her priorities is equitable education for all.
Does anyone have any other candidate that they would like to bring forward for this? Okay. Then, I would like a motion to designate Regina Williams as receiving our vote. And we're, actually, I'm going to read the resolution so that we can be clear on what we're doing here. So, actually, I'm going to read it, but I'm not going to put in who made motions because we don't have those yet. But the resolution reads as, "It was moved by Member Blank and seconded by Member Blank to designate Elizabeth Adams, Executive Secretary to the Superintendent, to cast a vote on behalf of the Board for," and it would be Regina Williams, "to represent Region Eight for a three-year term on the MASB Board of Directors." So I need a motion on approving this resolution.
I would like to make a motion that we consider approval, I'm sorry, that we designate Regina Williams to, for the MASB Region Eight Board of Directors. This is Action Item 190258.
I second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Member McCoyn and seconded by Member Savage. And as it reads, I just want to be clear that this is, we are designating Elizabeth Adams to cast a vote for Regina Williams to represent Region Eight for a three-year term on the MASB Board of Directors. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. And now, we are at follow-up board questions. So what I have is outstanding from our last few meetings are the dates for professional development and training with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and Growth Works and the alignment to the curriculum.
Do we know when we're going to get that?
Dr. Bender, do we know when we'll have that?
The schedule actually is being built right now. I don't have an exact date at this point, but we're building the schedule right now, yes.
We'll put that in board notes as soon as it's completed.
Okay, is this something that's going to take a week, a month, a year?
So it won't take a year.
Okay.
And we will get to it as soon as it is complete.
Okay.
We have to schedule around PD that was already existing within the buildings, but looking as that is a priority, moving some things around with the existing dates and working with the various buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And then, the bid-out process for starting blocks, Salem High School pool.
Did we do that in notes?
I don't believe so.
I don't remember seeing it. Okay, so those are still outstanding. And then, from tonight, Member Kehoe asked for information on the funding of activities, clubs, and athletics.
Yeah, specifically, and also, I'd like to know which, which of those things that we have are no-cut on those programs, whether it be activities or athletics, in addition to the funding information. And so, for the funding sources, I think there's, from what I understand, there's three potential funding sources. There's either, the district itself is doing this out of its general fund. There is student fees that they spend as part of that, or there is booster clubs or other scholarships or sponsors that occur. And it'd be interesting to understand for each of those programs, what is the amount of funding assigned to each of them.
Is there anything else from tonight that I missed?
There was a, we had a, I mean, it's a general question about if they were able to gather like grade point averages for activities?
Yeah, that was still outstanding from my previous.
Yeah, that was sent by email by Patrick. But we didn't have an answer to it yet, so it wasn't sent to the whole board.
Okay.
So that's why.
Also, I did get, we did get the breakdown of the programs by school. Is it possible to get this electronically?
Yes.
I'm trying to avoid storing a bunch of paper.
Okay.
Oh, and then, we also talked about wanting to have the same kind of Hall of Fame that's done for our activities as we're doing for our athletics. And along the same lines, things like signing day. I'd like to have the administration get back to us as to a plan to be able to address that or to not.
Yeah. We can, I know that they said that they would discuss that.
Yeah. So if we can have that as an action, I'd like us to follow up on it.
So at least some way to celebrate those.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if you're going to have a Hall of Fame for athletics, why aren't you having it for your other programs? So, and that's my personal perspective, but you know, if the administration's got something else that they want to do to recognize and honor those groups, then that's great, but you know, let's have them explain.
Right. I agree. I just didn't know if it was going to look the same as a Hall of Fame.
No, it's fine.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to dictate what it looks like, but I did hear them commit to taking it back and having conversations around some additional opportunities to celebrate outside of athletics.
Okay.
Okay. All right, at this time, I don't think we have anything left on the agenda except for adjournment. Would anybody like to make a motion on that?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I second that.
Motion made by Member Lazarowitz and seconded by Member Savage. Any discussion? Doug looks like he wants to discuss. No, he's just ready to vote. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. The motion passes six zero.
Please remember.